I'll go ahead and call the board. Tonight's meeting for City Council, Monday, April 8th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Welton, Bizzer?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Weiss? Rhys?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
We did receive a request from Councilman Weiss and Councilman Welton for to be excused for this evening.
Motion to excuse Ms. or Mr. Weiss and Sandy for this meeting this evening.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now I'm looking for approval of agenda for this evening's meeting unless there's changes that somebody would like to make.
I would like to add a discussion item, Discussion Item 8, to the M dot slash grammar court order there by Putnam, intersection.
Okay.
And some items we need to probably discuss and see where we can move forward with things. We're pushing M dot.
All right.
So I don't know how you want to word it.
I would say triapit flow at the intersection of M forty-three Grand River and northern south Putnam. All right.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other changes for the agenda this evening? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the agenda with the changes as submitted.
Yes.
Yes.
You need to vote on the first motion.
Oh.
To take and add to the agenda.
Oh, yeah, adding to the agenda. Looking for a motion to add that item as discussion.
I made the motion. So I'll second it.
All right.
I have to leave it up.
Yeah, all those in favor? All right, now a motion to accept the agenda with the changes made.
I made the motion to accept the agenda with changes.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right, now we have an opportunity for audience participation. Looks like maybe our MSU students are still recovering from their tough loss this past weekend. All right, I will move on to council meeting minutes of March twenty-fifth. Looking for a motion to approve those unless there are changes to be made to what is presented.
I'm just going to approve as submitted. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Now, we're coming up to a count payable for you this evening.
Count's payable is very light this evening. I'd like to make a recommendation or a motion to approve, check seven-one-six-one-four through check seven-one-six-five-zero. The total amount is fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred and nineteen dollars at thirty-eight cents.
Great, nice memo. Thank you. If there's no questions regarding the payables, Holly, will you call the roll? Rhys?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page two and one.
All right, and moving along, we have a presentation regarding monthly water and sewer billing. I'm going to shut off here. Rachel's going to be leading this. Thank you, Rachel.
So while this is coming up, Ann is here tonight as the billing clerk and so if you have any specific billing questions on how that end would work on hers, we're here to answer any questions you have. Staff has worked really hard on putting together what we think is a good plan for changing to, from a bimonthly to a monthly billing. Ann and I met with, I think it's monthly.
There you go. Yeah, that's good.
Ann and I met with Dan at DPW to kind of start the process. So we met with Dan who kind of handles the DPW end of meter reading and getting everything to Ann to process bills. And we kind of brainstormed, came back at it, went away, came back, and so this is where we're at. So why make this change? I know we talked about during the budget work sessions that, in the goal setting, that we were contemplating this and we feel that this will help residents with more consistency in their billings and be able to budget better for their utility bills. If you think about majority of bills that people have, they're monthly, they're not bimonthly. And so we get a lot of residents who are almost confused when they first come in, if they're new, on why we bill bimonthly. And then when they have a final bill, it's always two months late, almost. They kind of assume that they're done, but nope, you've got to go back two months. And so that can be a little bit confusing. So we're thinking that if we're able to make this change, residents would be a little bit less confused and easier for them to budget. And then we do have a few residents who ask Ann, can I pay this every week? Can I pay this monthly? And so we do obviously accept those. And so that's kind of happening more and more when residents ask. And then the other benefit to the resident and the city is we're going to be able to detect leaks out in the field a lot sooner than, you know, if you get a, if you have a leak on January first, we've already read your meter yesterday. We're not going to read it again until March. So you've got two months there on metered. Well, it's metered, but...
Undetected.
It's wasted water.
Right.
Yep, so. So those are kind of the benefits and the reason behind making the change for us.
Okay.
So I wanted to just briefly go through what the new procedure would be. DPW would read the meter on the last day of the month. So they would read the meter on July thirty-first. Ann would, right now the ordinance talks about that she is required to have those bills out by the tenth of the month, knowing that usually, no later than the fifth, she has them out. And so we are recommending that we can keep that tenth of the month in there, knowing that it's pretty much always going to be the fifth. But if something happens and we need those few extra days, we would like to keep that in there. And then, right now, the bills are due the twenty-fifth of the month and we would like to switch that to the last Wednesday of the month for continuity. Right, we have to change that. When the twenty-fifth falls on a weekend, we have to change it. When the twenty-fifth falls on a holiday, we have to change it. If we do the last Wednesday of the month, we don't run into holidays very often. Pretty much never, almost. Maybe Christmas, New Year's, but that's not going to happen for a few years. And we also have, shut offs are the third Wednesday of the month currently and we'd like to keep that. So that way, it triggers Wednesday, something is due at the city. So people will kind of get in the habit of Wednesdays. And then, when, after the last Wednesday of the month, we would recommend that a ten percent penalty is applied the day after bills are due. Right now, we wait for the mail to come. We process the mail on that day after. That's kind of your little bit of a grace period and then we apply the penalty now.
So penalty, ten percent?
The penalty now is five percent. And then we mail out a past due late notice. And then, which day do we add the other five percent?
The second Thursday of the following month after the twenty-fifth, I add another five percent.
So it's a total of ten percent?
Yeah. And so I kind of created this calendar because I'm more of a visual person. If you, so we would recommend implementing this in, the first bill to go out like this would be August. And so you'll notice like on the eighth, I got a laser pointer.
Nice.
So they're going to read the meter on the thirty-first of August?
Yeah, so July thirty-first, they'll read the meter. And then by July ninth, Ann will have the bills out in the mail. And then we'll just cruise along as normal. We'll still have this shut off for the May and June bill that was mailed in July. So this is going to be our odd month because we're going to still have some of the old way and then the new way. And then we would move along. The bills would be due that last Wednesday. We would apply penalty on the twenty-ninth. And then we would read the meters on the thirtieth again.
So you said the third Wednesday, the bill would be due?
No, the fourth Wednesday, the bill would be due. The third Wednesday would be shut off of the following month.
Okay, gotcha.
So I think you go to the next. So then, to finish out that whole cycle, we would mail shut off notices. Now, this is a change. Right now, when we apply the first five percent, the past due notice is mailed. We then cruise along and then it would be like, this Thursday, we would apply the second five percent and send out a shut off notice. We are proposing we would send one past due notice, call our shut off notice. So we apply the ten percent the day after. We basically wait about six days, seven, eight, somewhere in there. We send out the shut off notice and that still gives them eight more days, eight business days to still pay that bill.
And then around first and second? We're giving them a couple, well, three more days for their shut off notice. We're mailing out three days earlier.
Okay.
The shut off date is still going to be the same, but we're mailing out the shut off notice early.
Yes, yes. We also are going to be sending out, if you remember, the next bill has to be mailed out here, but we know we're going to mail it this week.
Yep.
On that bill, it's going to say previous balance or shut off balance or we're going to, we haven't quite figured out how we're going to word that yet, but we really want to highlight that. And that's still going to be a third notice for people. So they get their original bill. They get their next bill that says, hey, you have a previous balance. And then they will get this, they would get this shut off notice in the mail.
So Rachel, let me ask you real quick. Have you kind of chatted with some of your fellow treasurers to find out their monthly process? And I'm sure you have because you're so very due diligence and everything. And this works for other communities with these quick turnarounds and with monthly mailings, monthly shut offs?
Majority of my colleagues do monthly billing. And I actually ran into two in this process that went from either quarterly to monthly or bimonthly to monthly. The city of Mason just went through this process and Ann spoke with their billing clerk extensively and they kind of helped with some of the literature that went out, notices that they sent, just some frequently asked question guides, that type of stuff. So they were really helpful with that. The city of West Branch just went through this as well in January. They bill quarterly and so they had quite a big change as well. So that would be kind of the whole cycle, right? So start to finish, it is a quicker turnaround, but I think...
Do you have your literature ready?
Somewhat, we do. We have drafts of everything ready, but we wanted to kind of present to you guys, see what the take back, see what the questions are because you guys are residents as well and this is the first time you're hearing it. So the questions that you ask, we can tweak our stuff to reflect that.
I have a question. What's driving the change from two five percent penalties totaling up to a ten percent to going from straight to the ten percent? Is it, are we...
I think it's because they only have one late notice whereas before you had two late notices.
But we're still giving, I guess what I'm wondering is, when we do, their second notice is their next bill, right?
Correct.
Could we still, because we're mailing that anyways, could we do the five percent the day late and then tack that extra five percent on when they get their next bill? So you're still getting ten percent, but you have, I guess, I'm wondering, is ten percent for a day late too much? Do we go to the five percent and then if you're still, if you still haven't paid, then you get the full ten percent? That's my only question.
So maybe this will tag onto that. But we're going from bimonthly and two late notices sent out to now we're doing monthly notices and monthly lates. What is that going to increase our postage to?
We'll get there.
Okay, all right.
I was going to say the efficiency because you're doing the labor.
Yeah.
Yep, we've got a cost analysis a little bit further.
Okay.
But to answer Dan's question, we could split it up continuously or continue to split it kind of the way we do. The problem with that is, is so it might change from month to month on the actual day that we mail the notices, the actual next bill. And so if we mail it on the fifth this month and you get five, so you get five percent added on in the fifth before she prints the bill. And she prints the bill usually a day, maybe two, before she mails it out. And then next month, she might be just on top of it and she mails it the second. And so that would be something we would have to work out if that was the direction that we wanted to go. The other thing is eighty-nine percent of the other communities that I talked to, they do one penalty and it's usually ten percent. So that's why we went this direction.
My question I'm going to throw out there too before you move on is, how is this going, what type of postage return do you get? I'm one of them because I have a PO box and for whatever reason, post office keeps kicking it back here saying, can't deliver, even though we know that. What is, how is that going to affect you? Or how is that going to affect residents?
I probably get twenty-five back.
Okay.
For billing cycle. I'm kind of hoping by going monthly, people will be like, oh, I forgot to change that address or my snowbirds.
Yeah.
Oh, I meant to do that and now that it's every month, because that's what I'm hearing, is I forget about this. It's every other month.
Yeah.
And they won't forward the postcards, so those automatically come back. I see in the winter, it's a while that I get back, then in summer.
Okay.
Even to set up recurring payments monthly, is it easier to go like...
Oh, absolutely. I'm very excited about this because all my other bills are reoccurring out of my bank, so hopefully that's easy for everybody.
The other thing you need to kind of touch on is we do email bills now. And not everybody, that doesn't work for everybody, but in this, if we decide to do this, one of the pieces that we talked about that we firmly believe is we need to send a mailing out to every resident, every utility customer, so they know this is coming. And something we kind of touched on today is included in that letter, we want to include our email authorization form and our ACH payment form. So that way, residents know that these options are out there because we're getting more and more every month, but we don't, we still mail majority of them off.
So with that being said, are you planning on updating the calendar on the website and everything and sending a calendar along maybe with the mailing that it would show when the dates would be?
Yep.
The automatic withdrawals would be?
So we need to work with the attorney on how we would have to do that with people who already are enrolled in the ACH program because of the literature that they sign. When they signed up, it specifically says bimonthly, this date we're going to pull. And so that's something that we need to work out with Tim on as this goes on. But we probably wouldn't mail with the initial mailing. We probably wouldn't send out a calendar just because we're limited to five or less sheets of paper. And if I did a calendar like I was showing, it would be bigger. We will absolutely note it on the website. And then when we send out tax bills, we would definitely update the calendar for the year in November or December when those go out.
I think it'll make things a lot better for people if they're buying or selling a home because it shows consistent water bill monthly instead of sticker shock of, oh.
Yep, okay.
So...
So then I kind of put this slide out of order, I guess, because we've already talked about shut offs. We talked about how it would be third Wednesday of the month. And we like, we really wanted to keep that because our residents that are continuously on that list, they know what that is. And so it'll just be an education piece for us to keep talking to people about the change that's coming. It's going to be monthly and it's going to be a little bit difficult to get used to, but we, that's what our jobs are. We need to work with our residents and make sure that they understand that process.
Do you think that this will hopefully lessen the amount of shut offs that you're sending out?
We hope so. We really, really are hopeful.
On the average, how many do you send out?
Shut off notices? I have that. Shut off day, we usually have no more than twelve.
Okay, that's not bad for the size of our community.
It was not bad at all.
Okay.
Actual shut off notices that she mails out, she sends around one thirty.
Okay. Each billing cycle.
So the Thursday before shut offs, she's sending out around a hundred and thirty notices.
And can you guys share, that's out of how many total accounts?
Yeah, how many bills total?
She starts out, oh, that's not on here.
About fourteen hundred.
Okay.
So she starts out with about fourteen hundred. The late notice that gets mailed, basically the day after due date, she sends about, I'd average about two fifty. And then the shut off notice is about one thirty.
That fourteen hundred does not include the emails sent on Sunday.
Okay.
So a quick question, readiness to serve and all that, that fee, that's split up, then?
It would always split.
Yeah, and what we would need to do, and that's a little bit later, but let's talk about it. We would need to change the fee schedule and we do that with the budget process anyways generally. And so Cory's working on that and I'm going to be talking about that later in the week at the budget work session and then leading up to this. That would need to be changed. Ordinance will need to be changed because there's specific language in the ordinance that talks about all of this. And so we're going to have to do that as well.
And you're wanting to implement this on August?
Yep, so we would want to probably adopt it. If we're saying yes, go ahead and move forward with the process, we would do a first reading of the ordinance on the twenty-second of April, second reading in May, then it would be adopted. And so then we would have six weeks to get out notifications and have that face-to-face contact with people that come and, hey, by the way, in August, you're going to get a bill and you're not used to that.
And that fourteen hundred, and that includes commercial as well? Okay.
And so this is the cost analysis and I apologize. It is kind of difficult to read and I have it here. And so I can email this out for you guys. But what I did was I went through and my sheet has four, five years and I shrunk it down for you on this. But it's just basically, this column is the original bill that is sent, how much we spent in postage, how much admin time and how much DPW time to get that initial mailer out, so their meter reading time. And then we project that this down here is what our new costs are going to be for that original notice. So you'll see on here that it's going from about twenty-eight hundred to sixty-seven hundred for that, for a, per year.
Oh.
Okay, and so this, this is just what we have so far this year. This is an actual annual cost. So if we go all the way over here to this column, it amounts to about half or about double, a little bit less than double because we anticipate less postage with that second notice being eliminated. So we did a, on here, it shows kind of that bold expense number, but I did break that out into actual costs, so our postage and our card stock for the postcards. We're anticipating that's going to be around eighty-eight hundred dollars per year, whereas annualized, it's about fifty-three hundred right now.
Well, the more people you can encourage to get on the email, that's going to drop your postage cost. So you're probably going to see a drop in that number, hopefully within the first year.
Definitely. And then we did look at our cost of having city hall process or go through that billing process in DPW. That's going to be increased. It's going to be about double because, you know, Ann's going to be doing it every month. Dan's going to be out reading meters every month.
Sure. What percentage of the customers use the online payment, the ACH?
So I just ran this because I'm a numbers geek. Last fiscal year, from July one of seventeen to six-thirty-eighteen, fourteen percent of our entire monies coming in was either ACH or credit card payments. So that was pretty decent. I ran the same report for current from July one eighteen to March thirty-first and we're at eighteen percent of payments. And I think that number is just going to continue to climb.
Yep, and the more, the more information you put out there, whether it's social media or in your letter and just continue to write people, it's going to go up. And again, that's going to bring your costs down.
And it's just the trend. People want to pay that way.
Yep.
And then I think, I think we will continue to see that and I think people, if we added into that, the bank pay people, that number would be way higher. Because the bank pay people from our end, we still have to process a check. It comes to, your bank sends us a check in the mail and we process it just like if any resident sends us a check. If we could work out a way for them to do that electronically, that number would be much higher than eighteen percent.
Right. Yes, Tim?
Is there not a fee involved in doing electronic payment?
There's not.
There's not?
No.
No.
There's not a fee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so yeah, the more we can promote this and encourage, then...
For ACH payments, there is no fee. For credit card payments, our residents pay the two point six-five percent to the credit card handler. We don't get involved in that.
But coming directly out of their checking or savings, if there's no fee?
Nope, no fee.
Cory, operationally, from the DPW side, are we using a lot more of our RF type readers where they walk by and then you just boom, boom, boom?
Yeah, drive in the truck.
Yeah, today it's all done by drive-by. I think Ann could probably tell you, you know, historically, was it a two-day process?
It was.
And now it's a four-hour process?
Yep.
But everything's changed overnight, hasn't it? There's no more efficient we can do in that area?
I'm just trying to... That's a, that's a great question because there is a technology that exists that you could get real-time reads from a central location such as on top of a water tower. Those systems are pricey, but there's a lot of advantages to them and we've talked about it internally. And Scott and Dan have actually gone and got some pricing on those kinds of things. We're not recommending it yet, but that is out there. And the benefit of that is if you're a resident, you could actually go into like a web portal and look at your real-time reads.
Yeah.
And so from a leak detection standpoint, it'd be amazing. But it's a, it's a significant expense.
I'm just trying to look at what can we do operationally in that to save costs and to create less...
Yep, absolutely. And then this slide just kind of goes over what I just talked about. We anticipate the cost will be a little less than double because we're going to be eliminating that second notice. And then I didn't project penalty revenue in the analysis because I just don't know. I would like to think that by making this change, people are going to be late less often. But I don't know that. And what that number is, I'll tell you here from now on. You know, it's just something that I can't project. Another thing that I found interesting in the analysis is our penalty revenue was paying for the cost of mailing the entire process. So I thought that was interesting to find that while we, we are spending money to send the bills out, our penalty revenue is covering that cost. So I thought that was very interesting to find. And then we're hoping that even if we charge the ten percent, we're kind of thinking we'll be about the same, but we just don't have a way of anticipating that at this time. And then Anne created a citizens guide for water billing. It's a really expensive document that kind of explains what we're looking to do. What else does it have in it, Anne?
Why we're doing it, we're letting the residents know what our, our water tower holds. Just some general information, you know, we have X number of lines within the city. We're hoping that this will help you as well as helping us. We've kind of left a few things a little loose, hoping that they ask questions and of course, we can't anticipate every question. But I, I kinda think it's driving good. And Mason was very helpful, they were wonderful.
So of course, we'll throw out the billing calendar that we've created. We'll post it on Facebook, we'll put it on our website and then I talked about the mailing that we wanna do to make sure that everybody is aware that we are making a change. So the next steps like I talked about would be ordinance amendments would come to council for a first and then second reading. You would adopt a fee and rate resolution as part of your budget process. And then we would implement with July bills, the first ones being mailed in, in August.
Will you be able to give us a copy of your literature when we come back for first reading?
Sure.
Can we see that?
Yes, definitely. We didn't wanna overwhelm and give you way too much information right from the get-go.
Well, we've been talking about this for a while, I think this is a very good plan. I mean, I think every, I can't imagine there's anybody out there that has like a bi-monthly mortgage or, you know, electrical or anything like that. So it, it more than likely will help and maybe it won't be as tough to make those payments on a monthly basis if people can add it into their monthly budget. I think you guys did fantastic work. Thank you very much for being so thorough. Any other questions for them?
And we talked about too, Cory and I talked about today about, so we're throwing all of this at you and we're expecting that you're gonna say, yeah, but, and what about this and have you thought about that? And I would really appreciate if you guys could shoot me an email or give me a call. And so I can have that information to present with the.
With the first reading?
With the first reading. I'll do it in a memo format and just kind of a questions that were asked, so that way you guys are all getting that same information.
I think you did, you guys did a great job answering, I mean, you know, just our gut questions as we went through it now, so, you know. And you can send out that spreadsheet to us, we can cross analysis, show them the five years, okay.
I would've liked to do the first reading tonight.
Yeah, I mean, this is really good work, you guys, it really is. It's making it more efficient for our residents, you know, residential and commercial. And it's, it's helping you guys streamline your internal process, so I appreciate this hard work.
Thank you.
Really do. Cory?
So you can blame me for not.
Well, Tim would need to be ready with language too.
Well, yeah. When would you want it to be effective?
So if we did first reading for our next meeting, which I think you said would be our.
The twenty-second.
Yep, and then our second reading, May, could we make it effective?
July first, is that doable?
Can you go beyond the fifteen days?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay. If that's what you guys are comfortable with.
No, I thought maybe it was gonna be August.
No, if that's what your timeline is looking at, Rachel, and if you want it to, and if that's where you believe that you're gonna be ready at, then yeah, we'll, we'll roll with what your timeline would be because you know what you and Anne can, you know, handle and get out and get printed and all that good fun stuff. And this is really good work, you guys, it really is.
Thank you.
Cory?
I think the reasoning for the July first is to just start with a new fiscal year.
Sure, sure.
So that, that was, that's what's driving this and then I just wanted to recognize, we, I, part of the reason we wanted to do this was to hear the concerns and I think Dan's question on, you know, the timing of the penalties is a good one. So that's something we can, you know, take a look at and make sure we're solid in what we're offering.
Yeah.
My only other, I, I just thought of this and it's, it's separate, but it, but it's a, it's a part of this too. We've talked about possible fee increases on the water and sewer side when we're working with the road villages and whatnot. And if we're looking at something like that, a large increase or whatever in the fees, timing of when we go to monthly and any of that.
So we've talked about that too and if there has to be a, a rate increase, it would probably coincide with going to monthly so that maybe it's not as hard of an increase as people may.
That was.
And you guys.
If we went to monthly and then like two months or three months later, we did a big jump, that could be.
But the average cost per month is not gonna change.
No.
They're not paying anymore because.
Not because of this, no.
Right.
That's why I said it was separate, but.
And I'm sure you guys are gonna have some recommendations or suggestions during our budget meeting, which, a little plug for that, we are going to be having on Thursday, April eleventh, so, and we'll get to that a little bit later. All right, thank you so much, I look forward to having this on the next packet so we can move it forward. Again, great work.
And then Cory, anything that you have that would be just knowledgeable wise for infrastructure improvements for billing? Or maybe there's a different software, something that can make it more effective too? I don't know if there's, when was the last time that was updated?
So our billing software is the best software for this. We, our financial suite is, we use VSNA and that is like the Cadillac version of, of municipal billing and finance. And so we internally in city hall would not wanna change that. But as far as DPW and there may be some things that they would recommend, it's just what's the cost and what's the, what's the advantage of that.
Excellent, all right, well, then we'll just continue to move right forward. We have three different action items this evening. One is a request for funding from the Tri-County Office of Aging. I do know that they come to us each year and ask us to participate. And it looks like we've got a five-hundred-dollar request. And is this pretty consistent, I think it's pretty consistent with what we've done each year. So any questions or discussions or a motion to move this forward?
To make a motion, move the five-hundred dollars designated to the Tri-County Aging, uh, for the Meals on Wheels program.
All right, if there's no other discussion or questions, Holly, will you call the roll?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Excellent, all right, fire code ad hoc committee appointment. Cory and I had a little bit of a discussion on this and I appreciate taking the time to talk with me about that. So as you all know, we are trying to move forward with our fire code and inspection schedule that would be performed by NESA. We have talked about forming an ad hoc committee with the surrounding municipalities that NESA serves so that maybe this would help put us all on the same type of inspection calendar, fire code language. And based on Cory's memo here, we had one respondent to join our ad hoc committee, which is Ms. Bidigar. And so that's a recommendation that we have and then as well, the council members that I had mentioned from our previous meeting, which I believe Noah, John, and I think, oh yeah, Jeff, because of knowledge, expertise and.
Backup.
And backup and, and so I'd like to move that forward if there's no other questions. And I think Tim might have, do you have any advice for us or anything? I mean, I think this is gonna be a short-lived ad hoc committee, I don't foresee this going into great length because I really think that us trying to work with a NESA representative to get this moving forward would be the.
I don't, I don't see any issues, it's a temporary committee and its lifetime is set by the charter and you can always extend it.
Yep, okay, all right. So with that being said, do I have a motion to move this forward then with?
Do you have who's gonna be from there?
We only have one respondent and that would be from, is she Wheatfield, Wheatfield Township? She's already been a NESA board member for Wheatfield Township, but she had responded favorably to being a part of our ad hoc committee. We could always add members later if somebody should respond back to Cory from the request that he sent out. But at least it gets us moving forward and I believe it will either be Chief Yance, Director Yance that would participate or he may delegate somebody, but again, I, I find that, I feel that this is gonna be short-lived if we can just get it.
It's surprising anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
The little history behind that, they, it's been talked about at the other.
At the NESA board level.
Yeah, and they're forming their own little thing as well to try to come up with a.
I don't think they were very excited that we're forming this ad hoc committee.
Procedure.
And my feeling is, is that this has been talked about for several years now and has had no movement forward. And I'd like to see something put in place so that we don't have another tavern one-on-nine situation in our community with any other business. Because if we can prevent a, a, an issue like that, then we're doing our due diligence.
That's enough, I'll make a motion to appoint Barbara.
Bidigar?
Bidigar, to the Fire Code Ad Hoc Committee.
Do we need to name our representatives as well to establish the ad hoc committee at this time? Okay, we already did, so we're adding her. All right, so any other questions or comments? All right, Holly, will you call the roll?
Hall?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Cory, will you work to get a first meeting set up for us on that?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And then will you also inform Chief Yance that we have an established committee now? All right, our last agenda item for this evening is the McCormick Park Pavilion Replacement Design Proposal. As you may know from being down at McCormick Park, the original pavilion, the white pavilion, is in desperate need of some repairs and Cory has put together this memo for us. I know I've had residents reach out to me and say, when's the, when are the shingles gonna be taken care of? And when's it gonna be painted? The brown one is so nice, so what are, what are our plans to move this forward?
Yeah, so we have funds budgeted this year to do a replacement pavilion. The decision process was to mimic the existing rotary funded pavilion that was put in place in two thousand. So that is almost twenty years old and rotary stains it on a regular basis, it's been a really good addition to the park. So in the process of trying to mimic that design, we found some old plans from the nineteen eighties that were used as a basis, but we, we have to get them updated for today's building code. And if you remember at the last meeting when we talked about the Volunteers Park Plan, when it comes to putting an improvement over fifteen thousand, we have to have a signed and sealed engineer drawing. That's also gonna be necessary for us to get our building permit. So we reached out to two architect companies in Lansing area. In the memo, I stated that we did not receive a proposal from C two AE, however, we did get that at the tail end of last week and it was higher than the proposal from Bergman. So the recommendation is to go with Bergman for a cost not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars and that will produce the construction documents that we need to bid the project and get the building permit.
Okay. John?
So is this something that we can keep this on file and when other pavilions need to be built in other parks or whatever, we can, then we can use the same print without having to have it redone again?
That's the plan.
Good.
Yeah, assuming there's no changes and.
That's when I like that.
For a plan.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry.
And the city's gonna do the.
We'll have to do her bets for floodplain.
Yeah, so the pavilion is in a floodplain and it's, one of the benefits of having Scott DeBries is in his prior career, he did those things all the time, so if Scott could just carve out some time, you know, that's always the challenge, but he's, he's committed to me that he would do those for us, so we are saving some money on that.
So with the print that you have found, probably going off, is it, this print gonna be based off that? So.
Yeah, that basically gives them, I guess, sort of the structural look of what it was, but it doesn't conform to today's COVID.
But once we spend this, then we can use this for any other pavilion we wanna do a town, right, Tim? Or does a print expire at some point?
Their proposal as presented indicates that they're going to retain ownership of the, of the product and that we agree not to use the documents for future additions or alterations or for other projects without Bergman's express written consent.
Can we listen to that, Cory? A trick for that if we buy the prints, we can use the prints in the future.
I guess with that in mind, I, I like that too, but what was the difference between the Bergman and the C two AE bids? And is that a stipulation in the C two AE bid? I guess would be.
Yeah, it was about a fifteen-hundred-dollar difference and I, I didn't read the contract once you were going to this.
I would go back to Bergman and ask if they could modify it for us, knowing that we are gonna have other projects in the future. Tim?
Also, there's a couple of other tweaks that are gonna be, need to be made to their standard terms and conditions. They do have some indemnification provisions that I would recommend be deleted and if not, that they be qualified by language that says that it only applies to the extent permitted by law, going that the city is constitutionally prohibited from granting an indemnification. And so we haven't heard back on those comments yet. So if you're going to proceed on this, I would suggest that when you make the motion to approve, you also add upon review and approval of the city attorney.
So with that being said, is this something we should take no action on and push it to the twenty-second meeting? I'm asking.
What, what is your feeling?
I would not recommend that, but you're free to do that.
Why would you not recommend it? Are we losing time as far as like construction season? I mean, we're still pretty in, just articulate for us why you would not recommend that.
I wouldn't recommend that because the, the floodplain permitting is gonna take months and so we wanna get this moving as quickly as possible. The two changes that Attorney Peron recommended.
Which we're already crossed out.
We've noted those in the document, we've sent those to Bergman. It's not uncommon for a standard contract to have the indemnification because they have private sector consultants too. And so I, I don't anticipate that's gonna be a huge issue, but I think with the way Tim has laid out the motion, you'd be okay. That said, you know, the question of, you know, this drawing being their property, you know, that is not something that we anticipated. So if council felt like that was gonna cause issues, then you could table it. But I would recommend, you know, allowing staff to work through that.
Can we modify the motion then to include language that if Bergman will not give us the rights to use the print in the future that we have, that we, that, that we will not then move forward with them? Then we could go to our second choice, C two AE and see if that additional fifteen hundred is giving us intellectual property? Because I guess that's what we're looking at, we want intellectual property of that print so that we can use it in the future.
Sure.
The current version allows for consent to be given for its use.
Okay, so we would have to ask each time we wanna use it?
Yes.
And eventually they could say no, right?
Maybe we could negotiate the consent would not be unreasonably withheld.
Sure, like if we could have consent to use it for the next.
If it's for a similar use for the city in a park.
Yeah, 'cause who's to say we wouldn't wanna build one over at, at Volunteers?
Right, and their concern is that somebody's gonna use it and it will be used improperly.
Right.
That you won't have the proper foundation for the design and then you're gonna blame the design for a failure.
Okay. What do you, how do you feel?
I feel that Cory and staff have the ability to negotiate.
Okay, all right.
I don't wanna hold up the project.
Sounds like you wanna make the motion then. No, you don't? No, all right. Well, I guess since Noah doesn't want to, I'm looking for somebody else to make it. Do we have any more discussion that we want, or we can discuss after we make the motion before I call the vote, so.
Okay, I make a motion to approve McCormick Park Pavilion Replacement Design Proposal for Bergman in the amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, giving staff the negotiation with what we've discussed.
And upon review and approval of the city attorney.
There you go. There you go.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? No? All right, Holly?
Hall?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right, now we're gonna move on to the discussion item that we added and it is the traffic issue that we have at the intersection of M forty-three, commonly known as Grand River Avenue and North and South Putnam. We know that Grand River is our two-lane going east and west on both sides. We know that Putnam is technically single lanes going north and south on both sides with no turn lanes to turn right. And I know that earlier today, myself and Councilman Bizzard, we had a resident reach out to us via social media regarding the intersection and how dangerous it is becoming and Chief is not unaware of this. We know that there are issues at the intersection, we know that there's a road diet plan out there and I wish Scott were here to be able to, to jump in to this discussion. But I guess we need to know, how are we gonna move forward on this? Because it seems like we're getting, you know, fairly good amount of concern.
Chief, before you, you say something, I do wanna say something. When you're heading north, the problem I'm having, and I see it every day when I'm coming home from work, people are going, if somebody's making a left-hand turn, they're heading north, they're going, getting passed on the right and there's been multiple, if not upon same traffic light, car is about to get hit with somebody else making a left, heading south, you know? And it's an ongoing issue. The lighting down there is also awful at night.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that would be because we've got gold lights in the DTA outpost, so I'm just throwing that out there because I don't like those lights.
Yep, this is the same, I've been here almost nine years and this has been an issue since day one. We've been talking this road diet probably about a year and a half after I got here. And what you just described, John, is one of the problems. You have people that are just in too much of a hurry, they don't stop behind the stop bar, they go through the crosswalk and don't yield to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. They go through the crosswalk and don't yield to pedestrian bicycle traffic. I'm in this uniform because I was out there today, and it's nice weather. People are out there. And I know that's out in the social media. People are going faster than the 25 mile an hour speed limit. They are pushing the red light and going through the red light. And so those all contribute to make that a very dangerous intersection. We've been in dialogue with MDOT, and we've been in dialogue at the Department Head Meeting. Soon after the first of the year, I wrote in writing to MDOT how dangerous this situation is, and they committed to having a meeting with us. And so they're on notice how dangerous this is. And so we discussed this at the last two Department Head Meetings, that it's probably time for the city manager to weigh in because I've given them out horsepower and put them in written notice how dangerous that is. And just to get to the table, to have the dialogue, to find out the cost. The biggest expense I believe is going to be that traffic control light there when you have left arrow turns. But that's also going to be a huge part of our solution because we've not taken any action on that intersection. And depending how part of it is, is part is controlled by MDOT. And then the other part of it is controlled by us. But for every action we take, there's a reaction because there's parts of the day that traffic is already backed up into Church Street if we prohibited a turn on right, which is part of the problem because people are so impatient that they don't even look for pedestrians. And I think that's one of the indicators today. It was somebody in a, pushing a carriage.
Yes, it was a school.
I've almost been run over there in my bright orange shirt walking across there, so I get how dangerous it is.
So, and there was an accident a few years ago where a gentleman was hit. And, you know, I hate to say it, come down to the point that somebody's killed, you know, trying to cross the street there. I can say I've come off Grand River, headed north, and almost got somebody at night. And it drives me nuts because it's like, you look, you look, you look, and, you know, people just step right out. I mean, I know it goes both ways, and that was talked about too.
Well, look how long it took for them to put a light at Zimmer. And it was because of countless multiple accidents that happened in that intersection of Grand River and Zimmer.
I guess I would encourage with our camera here, because you, we've all heard Chief talk, and we, this came up at our goal session, goal session, goal-setting meeting in December. We all want to do something, but part of it comes down to this road diet and MDOT because we control Putnam, but we don't control Grand River, and that's half the light, you know? And that's how Zimmer Road and Grand River finally got a light was citizen involvement. And Chief and Cory are doing everything they can, but if folks want, send an email to MDOT. Call MDOT, complain, because that's how Zimmer Road finally got a stoplight.
Chief, with the north and southbound Putnam, and people trying to scoot around and make those right-hand turns, do we have the ability as a municipality to put no turn on red signs?
We do, but as I said, there's going to be an adverse reaction.
Right, because it's going to line up.
And we also could paint that it's only a single lane, but people make it a two-lane. But again, if we do that, that's going to cause a reaction. Even when they treat it as a two-lane, traffic still is backed up to Church Street. And so, we do, within our authority, have that, but it's not going to fix the problem. It's going to create another problem.
Right.
So with that being said, Chief, 90% of the issue is coming from south to north. When people go around, because that part of that Putnam going that way is narrow versus the north side.
Right.
Was it feasible just to make that a no, you know, one lane, just coming north at the intersection? Or do you have to do both sides?
These are some discussions we're having because it will only partially take care of the situation, but it's going to adversely affect some parking on the other side that merchants may not be happy too, and it may affect some handicap parking, and so.
If you made that a turn lane, correct?
Correct. But to make it fully effective, you want it the same of both ways and having green arrows in both ways. And so, I don't think you want to invest and just partially solve the problem. But that is a complicated issue that's going to adversely affect some people. And what we don't know, we just want to get to the table, talk to them. Because we may get to the table and say, hey, we just can't afford this.
Do we have a particular contact at MDOT, or do we just? Okay, so can you follow up with that, Cory, and start knocking on the door?
Yeah, it probably needs, what do they call it, a greasy wheel against the grease.
Squeaky wheel. Well, that's true, you know, yeah, we can publicly put out a phone number and email. If you have concerns regarding this intersection, please contact MDOT.
I think we give them an opportunity to reengage after Chief's letter, which was really well done.
What timeframe are you looking to do some blood, or just out of curiosity?
It was during the winter season, and so we talked about that, because we know it was busy. And then as it got to the transition season, but before you know it, they're going to be busy with their summer projects. So now is probably the time that we need to be pushing to make that meeting happen.
Well, I'd like to see Cory go ahead and get involved too, because like he just said, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So if we start inundating them with, hey, we want to go to the table, and we want to discuss this, and, you know, our residents' pedestrians and driver safety is our utmost concern. You need to help figure this out, they're going to have to come to the table. So, keep pestering them.
Got it.
All right.
Not that you're all enough to do.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Very good discussion on a very important matter in our downtown area. All right, we did receive correspondence from NESA regarding their smoke alarm campaign, lead correspondence regarding the art grant. Holly, do you have anything you want to really quickly mention about that?
We did the art committee in meet last week. We're excited. We've got a lot of ideas. We'll resubmit next year. Obviously, we weren't really ready to submit our grant this year, so it was kind of just a.
You dipped your toe in the water. You dipped your toe in the water.
We weren't really shocked by it.
Okay. All right, well, excellent. And then we also have correspondence from WOW. Anybody have any questions regarding that? Probably not. It looks like it's a channel change or. Yeah.
I'd like to find out when they're going to come to take care of their lines when they're full. It's an ongoing issue that, you know, looks bad, and I think eventually it's going to be a safety thing when poles start falling.
We have Cory's update. Thank you very much. That's always a good report to read through. Any questions for Cory regarding his report, or anything that you would like to add, Cory?
Just want to make sure everybody's aware, we put in our quarterly goal tracking update. And so, if you have questions about those, please let me know. We're trying to use that to kind of keep ourselves accountable to council on what it is we're working on. You will see there's a few things we've had to adjust dates on. The road diet may be one of them as we wait on the third parties. But yeah, I think we've made some pretty good progress in the first quarter. Since Ann and Rachel are here, I would like to just recognize the work they've done along with Dan Gudding from our DPW. She's been really nice when your staff can take a project and take it to completion. So that was, I think, one of our biggest achievements in the last quarter, culminating with the discussion tonight. So, we know there's a lot more, and there's a lot more that we've got to move on, and we will continue working on this.
Great, thank you so much. And this report is fantastic. I love being able to look at this and see where you're at. It's so good, so transparent, so I thank you. And if you ever, you know, need to update it before you're ready to give it to us, you know, let us know. Chief?
I do have more. That was part, I know.
Oh, this is like rare.
But what we just discussed was on my agenda talk, so I'm glad we were able to talk about that. The other two things I wanted to talk about is, maybe you've seen on our Facebook some of the parking regulations because there's been some discussion in the community on that. We've had some complaints about that. We don't have the snow prohibitive parking now, but we have a number of other things. And so, I put two portions. This is portion of the state vehicle code that we've adopted in the city about impeding traffic, but I want to remind people too that not on a sidewalk, and not in front of a public driveway, and not near an intersection, not within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, not on a crosswalk, or within 20 feet of a crosswalk, and 30 feet of an intersection, which would be a flashing light or a stop sign. And so, when we see violations of that, we will be enforcing that because it's been completely driven. And so, and if people want the entire one, because people have said, well, it didn't mention handicap parking. Well, that is on page three of this. I just want to put all of that out there. So, if people have questions, I encourage them to call us at the Police Department. And then the third thing, and I don't want to say the most important, but it's Cory will be representing us at PRC Kids, the third graders this Wednesday, get their PRC Kids T-shirts, what they've not had in several years. And so, it was not taxpayer money, but a generous donation that paid for that. And so, I'm really pleased because we've, I'm ashamed we've not done it in the last few years, and I give all kinds of excuses, but it's going to happen Wednesday.
Very cool. Very cool.
Don Smith takes the lead on that. He's going to be there. But I think it's really nice that the city managers are going to be representing at the third graders.
That's awesome. I know that in my daughter's memory box, we still have a dear T-shirt, and that's really going back. So, very cool that that's going to be happening. Cory, you're going to love it. It'll be fun. Anytime you can go over to the elementary school, the kids are fun. All right, council members, has anybody been to their board meetings, and do you want to give an update? John, planning? Real quick and dirty.
Okay, more briefly, we had a slight plan review coming in front of us. We took no action. They're coming back with another plan, I believe, next soon.
Soon, soon. It is moving forward at a good pace.
I think that needed to happen, and I look forward to reviewing that cycle.
Excellent. Any other members? End of meetings? Parks and Rec, have you had anything recently?
A little this week.
Okay, all right, then you can give us an update at the next council meeting. All right, excellent. With that being said, we have another opportunity for audience participation. And now I'll just kind of move around the table for Councilmember comments, and Mr. Hall.
Quick good news thing for my veteran friends. There's something called quilts of valor. I don't know if you've heard about it. The last 10 years, ladies all over the country have made over 100,000 quilts. They're all hand-done. They have to be to a certain size, and they have different dimensions. Eight of our guys, me too, got one Wednesday. They're all different.
Oh my goodness.
I know they're huge.
Yeah, that's very cool.
They don't want to hear thank you. They don't want to do anything. So they're thanking veterans. They're just an amazing project. Two ladies from Williamston made the ones for one of our guys at the meeting last week.
What a very nice acknowledgement, and very self-respect to put all that time into quilting, because I have a couple quilting friends. I know what that takes. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Ballinger?
No comments for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Bizzard?
I encourage everybody, if they can, get involved, go to the NESA meetings, see what NESA has to offer. The smoke alarm campaign, I believe that's free of charge. I don't know if I'm misspeaking on that. But it does not say, so I think it'd be a good thing.
I know it's been heavily promoted on Facebook, so I'm assuming that maybe it's. Mr. Ryan?
No comment.
Just very quickly, spring is here. While we don't have a no parking enforcement from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., we do now have branch and limb pickup service that the city offers for free to residents. I know that our street is full of gifts for the city DPW workers, but that means that people are getting out. They're enjoying this great weather, doing the cleanup around their homes that needs to be done. One thing that I would tag on with what Chief just said about our ordinances that we have. Our ordinances are available on our city website. If you have questions regarding something, please don't hesitate to reach out, ask the question, and we will do the best to get an answer for you or direct you in the right path to go down to get an answer. But we do have all of our information available through our website with our zoning codes, our ordinances. So it's available. And thank you, Chief, for putting that out on social media so that people, seems like that's where everybody finds everything. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.